To advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Dan Barrington, Harry Doyle, Patrick Currie, Myrna Juarez, Peter Mitchell, Steve Mundy, Larnor, Liz Parsons, Rose Gladden, Peter Clark, Sue Walker, Cheryl Didsbury, Anna Robbery, Gary Miller and Carol Story.
Are there any further apologies? As all members are aware, there have three meetings taking place this evening. I would like to emphasise that these are key meetings and I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, treat these meetings accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with efficiently. The use of social media or filming for recording proceedings is permitted during the council meeting. This does not extend to film members of the public and anyone wishing to film the proceedings are also particularly directed to the very sensitive issue of felony children without the express permission of their parents. Can I remind members of the council regarding elected members tweeting using social media? If you are using your tablets to follow the agenda, that is fine, but if you wish to tweet or record proceedings, please go to the back of the chamber. That's not so as not to disrupt any of the speakers. We are students from J M U University. Yes, you're most welcome and most welcome to stay till the end. Yes, yes. And I thought there was these are cards. Thank you. Chief Executive.
On declarations of interest, Lord Mayor, can I remind members that you are only required to declare at meetings any disposable, punitive interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber due to consideration of the item?
Okay. Freedom of association, Mayor Anderson.
Are there any such declarations?
Freedom of the role of association, Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, can I move that in pursuit of section 249 of the Criminal Act 1972, that the honourable freedom of the city could confer on to Royal Deenocks?
Seconded. Is that agreed? Freedom of the city, Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, again, can I move in pursuit of section 249 of the Criminal Act 1972, that the honourable freedom of the city could confer on John Luke Cole-Collt from Royal Deenocks? Just to say, Lord Mayor, very quickly, because we have an opportunity to talk about it at the event, but I think I was overwhelmed with the number of people from the city and on beyond. So we'll ask you us to recognise John Luke's contribution to the city, considering the large culting events over the last three occasions, 2012, 2014, 2018, when Royal Deenocks was into the city. We're overwhelmed with the number of people that have come after us. I think we respond them to the people's feelings, to the people's calls, and we give them this award.
Do you agree to this name and to speak on this, anybody? No, thank you. Read. May they now go to the ordinary meeting. Chief Executive.
To advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Dan Barrington, Harry Doyle, Patrick Currie, Myrna Juarez, Peter Mitchell, Steve Mundy, Larnor, Liz Parsons, Rose Gladden, Peter Clark, Sue Walker, Cheryl Didsbury, Anna Robbery, Gary Miller and Carol Story.
Are there any further apologies to report? Declaration of interest, Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I remind members that you are only required to declare at meetings any disposable, punitive interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber due to consideration of the item? Are there any such declarations?
Yes, in relation to item 14, you are required.
With regards? On the minutes of the city council meeting held on the 19th of September, could you refer to the lead? Public questions, time, petitions and statements, all the others? And I advise the council that one statement has been received from Alderman at declaring in relation to item 15, the Pittsburgh massacre. So we'd invite that duty speaker.
Lord Mayor, Mayor Anderson, councillors. In 1941, when I was four years old, two strangers turned up at my house, Liverpool, my home, took me away, put me on a train. Very scared and actually, the end of that journey, I ended up in South Wales at a Jewish boarding school. Whilst that was happening, the very time that that was happening to me, tens of thousands of young children had similar experience. Strangers turned up at their homes, dragged them out, put them on a train to an unknown destination. Very similar experiences. But this is where the similarity changes dramatically. You see, councillors, I had a return ticket, they did not. And that sort of story that actually motivates me in the role that I have now. I spent six decades in and out of this building and I have to tell you hand on heart that never once, in all those 43 years, did I personally ever experience any semblance of antisemitism. But that's Liverpool, multi-cultural, multi-faith. But then again, things are changing. Your motion today, which has been accepted by the council, is very, very welcome by the community I represent. There's always been a very strong relationship between this council and the Jewish community, or I might say a reciprocal relationship. Over many years, our community has been closely involved with the council. How closely? Well, in my time alone, there have been eight Jewish gourmets, three Jewish councillors and dozens of Jewish councillors. On behalf of my chairman, Michelle Haywood, who has joined me here today and my executive, could I say on behalf of the community, I will continue... I'm sorry, I can't read my writing sometimes. I'm not used to reading speeches, you see. I've worked strange experience for me this. I will conclude by thanking you for your continued support and to reaffirm our strong allegiance with the council. Thank you all for the way you've received this. Thank you.
Mayor Anderson, do you wish to respond to Alderman's claim?
No, Lord Mayor, I think the obvious is spoken itself.
Thank you for that. By its urgent, item 4 agenda, urgent key executive decisions taken at the last cycle, to submit the reports on urgent matters are set out on pages 42 of the council agenda. Are there any questions? How mean of the reports, is that agreed? Item 5, mayor of Liverpool, announcements and update, Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of things from me by way of announcements. We have a... It's been talked about recently with our own reports into the unintended consequences of universal credit. And we know by some time in the next three weeks, 55,000 people will come across to universal credit in the city. It's going to be a really difficult time for them. I think the decision to actually choose Liverpool to roll this out ahead of Christmas was a pretty callous one. Because we know that people, as they make that transition onto universal credit, will have to go somewhere four, five weeks and possibly longer without some benefits. And leading up to Christmas, it's an extremely difficult and challenging time for most people. But for those on universal credit, it's going to be even worse. And so I think my message to the people of the city, and we're doing this through our own staff and our own council, is to engage and be involved with us in terms of trying to support people in this city who are seriously going to be challenged by the very fact that they won't have enough money to make ends meet. What we're doing is making sure that all of our one-stop shops, our libraries, our children's centres and every council building is available and open to receive donations of food into those particular premises and facilities. Quite often you get people who can't make the journey or won't make the journeys on a bus or whatever to take thousands of foods. But if they know that the libraries around the corner or the children's centre or the drop-in centre, whatever it is that we have, they can drop down at that particular facility or one-stop shop. So everywhere we'll be getting asked to receive goods and hopefully that will help us support people during what is going to be a very difficult time. A couple of things though, Lord Mayor, and it's important I think that councillors know about it because it's clearly going to help them support people in their own community. And it shows that where we can, we clearly want to try and make a difference to help people. So we're setting aside putting £50,000 into the mayor's home fund and that will be delivered in a number of ways. I've met with some of the people that run football free banks, Ian Bane and David Kelly today, to talk about what we can do, not to Christmas, but also what we can do immediately after Christmas. So through the home fund, we'll be working with the football fans, the food banks and the trust or trust to do exactly what we did last year, that was providing meat and vegetable vouchers so that could help people buy some fresh produce for Christmas. So we gave out £20 vouchers last year to over 300 families and that again will be made available to food banks and to people who want to give them out to people that have used their food banks. Also, we are providing support with fuel vouchers through... The Lecky Company is actually now in profit and making a profit and that's going into the home fund. So last year we supported Kailims with £20 with fuel vouchers. Not a great deal, but you know, it's about all we could afford. But this year, we're going to increase that to £30. We're also going to be working with our food banks and citizens' bikes and our own ward councillors, you yourselves, to work with people who will receive some housing benefits and council tax support, where we will offer those families affected by new trade, but also those that are looking after children under one. Again, we'll be offering fuel vouchers as well as food vouchers, £20 fuel vouchers to about 900 families affected by food poverty over the Christmas period. Of course, we recognise as well that January, February and March will be extremely difficult for people and again, we're going to be extending the period where we offer winter fuel vouchers right across that particular period as well and we'll be supporting round about 500 families. I think I've mentioned on numerous occasions how difficult life is for people who are on benefits but also those that are in working on benefits. And so all I would say is to councillors, to organisations, to the voluntary sector, to businesses, if you can support us, not only help us provide what is going to be a huge peak as people transfer to universal credit, it's going to be a huge peak, a five-week, six-week period where people will not have any money or any income coming in and they are going to be struggling. So if you know them, refer them to the food bank, but we refer them to ourselves, to our citizen support scheme and we'll help them in any way that we can. Just a couple of positive announcements and not so positive. It was absolutely discussed and it was discussed and argued on Sunday how our remembrance service was disrupted, not intentionally, by football fans coming into the station while we were holding our remembrance service and it had to be taken out another way, as we would respect those that lost their lives during the First World War. And the fact of the matter is that the BBC and in particular BT have no respect or consideration for us. Whilst our service was still going on and people were laying wreaths, the kickoff had gone, everything was gone, the whistle blown at Anfield and football was being played. We can no longer accept that to happen in this city. And I'll be saying to the chief executives of both football clubs that we won't tolerate that happening in our city again. I would write into the Premier League to make that same point. A couple of other things on a positive note. It was great to see that we've won the special event with games in 2021. Thank you to Ron, Ron had an eye on his team. We put in a tremendous bid and we look forward to hosting games in 2021. Also today, I want to inform council that three weeks ago, I wrote to Kingdom, our company that partner with us in terms of looking after the street scene, in terms of looking after litter in the streets of the city, to terminate the contract with Kingdom. So we will of course not let up on challenging people who, in my view, demean our city by dumping litter and problem litter, including cigarette butts. So we will work with tidy Britain to promote things in our city that we actually keep our city as clean and pristine as possible. Also, I mentioned about the Liverpool Lecky Company being a success because we are now in profit. So I would urge people to actually remind people in their wards and where they live and their neighbours and friends to actually join up to the Lecky Company because not only will it save money, but it will also provide extra resources for us to use to help support the most vulnerable in the city. That's more or less all from things from me. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to ask any questions.
Are there any questions, Mayor Anderson?
To the point, Lord Mayor, and they're both to congratulate the mayor on the moves that he's made. I very much support the letter going to the Premier League. It is absolutely right that when this nation stands still, just for that brief period, everyone should stand still and we should arrange our Sundays around that, our remembrance Sundays. So I really support what he's done. Can I just ask a question on the Kingdom contract, which I find more surprising? Because when we suggested something similar at the last council meeting, as we'll see on page 13, a very lengthy motion amendment by councillor Parsons, second by Jane Corbett, that actually blocked what we suggested, which wasn't quite a good Kingdom, but we're not in a position to do that, only the mayor can. So could I ask you what's changed between that council meeting and the time he wrote to them? I'm very glad that, as I understand it, we are the first major city to close Kingdom contract that has been swallowed by council. Will he be taking that information out to other councils and explaining why to other council leaders with a view to helping with the legal complications which might arise from such a move?
Okay. Yes, what changed, my mind. Second point is will I go out and advise people what to do now, what to do themselves, what to do? We'll do what is in the best interest of our city and you're right to point out, which is we're very grateful for your point now, we're very glad of it. If you don't make those decisions, we do.
Can I say, my Lord Mayor, we are very grateful... Sorry, we are very grateful locally for the Merah Artie Fund, which we are using to engage in cooperation with St Andrews Network, additional university advisors locally. And I think they are to maximise the benefit of our contribution, you know, cross our rewards and create a more... We thank the mayor and I think it does prove the value again of having the Merah Artie Fund to enable local councils to make local initiatives in keeping the local needs. And I know there were some in council who didn't share that view of not having a day, of being a game. It's a prime example of responding to that. In regards to the Kingdom contract, can I say as a constructive opposition, I think the council is actually right to take that initiative and if we would never have learnt from experience, we hadn't made that move. Before Kingdom gaining, we did have a very limp response to prosecutions. And I think the most important issue is not whether prosecutions for fight or review from criminal crime is done by council employees or mayors, is actually knowing that that is going to be followed through irrespective group of services. I was wondering maybe the mayor would like to last comment. We've had the great pleasure this week of meeting some of the enforcement officers the council is taking on. So that need to prosecute those people who have caused undue health and fire risks for the rest of the community is followed through, which is actually meaningful and can provide a service from my point of view. And I'll say that upfront. And then lastly, in regards to passing comments on to other authorities, I welcome the mayor's caution because we don't want to get ourselves into litigation damages by passing ad hoc comments because it's a quick, cheap, fragile. I think the mayor is quite cautious, we shouldn't be passing comments on really winding up a commercial contract, put ourselves in protection of damages.
Yeah, thank you for the comments, councillor. I think it were comments more than a question. But you're absolutely right, that's the reason why we're only debating which is too what we've been for now. But you're absolutely right that it was right to try. This is not a condemnation of anybody or whatever. With resources tight and the need to keep our city clean, we were right to explore it. And the fact of the matter is, is that the profits that were made were able to be put out into communities, into areas of the alley clear and stuff. However, you know, there were big concerns and I have to say ethical issues for me about how the concentration was in one part of the city and not the other. But I'm not going to go into that, other than to say that we've made the right decision. But it won't mean that we're let up because we will be working with our unions, we'll be working with our trade unions to actually look at how we respond to the desperate need to keep our city clean and in parts of the city. I was up in Blackfield today and you know, seeing couches and stuff dumped. What also we've got to do is pick up the phone and it will get removed. And so it's deeply frustrating when people do that. We've got to also stop people allowing fire on the streets, especially in Liverpool. And a great example of our community come together and work with the council was the Anfield Deli Angels, which I went and visited on Monday of this week. We've seen the great work that they've done, the great work that they do in transforming properties near Liverpool Football Ground and actually eliminating the rat infestation as well because of what they've done. So there are things that we can do. We'll work with the trade unions, we'll consult with them, we'll talk to them about how we improve the services. Just one thing in terms of announcements, I was actually over new road on, I think that was on Monday. To receive the cheque that's always placed from our trade unions who work on street collections, who actually take Coopers, Fridges and take them to be recycled and to be strapped. And the money that they get from that, they plough back into charity and gain the donations. There's always places £20 and £10, well to our workforce and our trade unions. But it's very difficult to do that, we've got to do.
Council of Democrats.
Just on two points that the mayor's spoken about. Several weeks before the events at the London Sunday, the Anfield Deli Angels Councils had meetings with Liverpool FC and we raised the issue of the kickoff being at 11 o'clock. and we raised the issue of the kickoff being at 11 o'clock. And we asked them to approach the PFA again. And asked at the time we popped back. And when we went back, they said that the answer would be again, well, the match was a kickoff at 12 o'clock. The Anfield Sunday celebration was at 11 o'clock and the PFA thought that there would be tension between them. But the main obstacles wasn't the PFA, all the clubs, the club was really supportive. The main obstacle is they've got a contract with BT. It was BT who insisted on the timing, you know, at that time because they thought the sound was a, so I later said that we put more emphasis on British cell phone. And it's them who insisted. And also PFA, if they don't know how long it takes to get beaten in the house of cities, in the house of football grounds, then you shouldn't be in a position to play. And the second one, let's say from the question of refugees. I've spoken to the mayor better than the mayor's more. The refugees dumping and the various activities that I've undergone. I've led some on 15 to 22 of them, who have been dumped at the St Peter Place in Edinburgh. I've spoken to the environment, spoken to the Royal Arms and spoken to all the mayor and the mayor's team. That is so bad, it's a for how. And the two departments in the council have been discussing whose responsibility it is. I don't think we should be discussing the responsibility. We should be moving and then finding out the prospect of it going on. But then people, how one of them are bearing down over the phone, they're bonfire with the amount of infallible materials that's there is beyond belief. Right, thank you, Mayor, for taking it in so nicely, getting that underway.
Yeah, and I think the comments councillor Blair asked about the PFA, that is, we have written to them and we will raise it. It shows if you like, in some senses, the disconnect between the powers of football. And most of you know today, I'm talking about a £5 million payoff to Richard Scudamore, £250,000 by each Premier League club, whereas, you know, we've got fans outside our football grounds collecting food for people who can't make ends meet. And so my suggestion is, is that the money should be given to but immediately taken back to set up a football trust, the grassroots football trust, to help young people in poverty, young people who are going for football boots and playing football in cities like Liverpool. So that's the thing. But it does show the disaffection between the powers of faith and ordinary people. And I think that's, that's something. I also just want to kind of remind them, just to say, I tweeted today when I was with councillor Gladden, Roy Gladden and Ian Francis, who's our lead for the enforcement. We paid tribute to what Blackfield had today. But we were in the veterans HQ where they referred us a wonderful piece of decor, a monument to 47 young soldiers who've lost their lives during the First World War and were from Times Street School. And it's an amazing job that they've done in bringing it back into you. So they're coming on display next week at the Tamar War. It reminded me really that they were 47 young lives lost in that war from one school. So imagine what it would be like with all our schools across the city in the beat and how many people lost their lives. So it was quite a movement. I'm glad councillor Gladden could invite me today. It was quite a movement experience with our Health and Safety Champion to either to book at least store piece of memorial, but also to pay tribute to those that the veterans that actually be buried. So again, my thoughts for everybody concerned.
Thank you for that. Changes in committee membership and appointments to outside bodies. Last one, can I ask a question?
Yes, I remember changes in committee memberships and appointments.
Is it on now?
Yep.
Just testing. And I remember changes in committee memberships and appointments to outside bodies as attached to this note, but the appendage, please. Is that agreed? I see seven amendments. Have I also mentioned the Housing Committee? We hope to set that up for January. We will be putting names forward. And from the names that go forward, that will make up that committee, we will choose the chair from that and that will be from the lady group that will make that decision. Thank you. Councillor Gladden?
Just a question. Just a question, my Lord Mayor. It doesn't appear on any say. Have you delineated the representation on the full that new housing committee or was that done initially?
Now, most complete, yes? Okay. Okay, is that agreed? Okay. I see seven amendments of the local policy represented that the government is, councillor Murray?
Yes, my Lord Mayor, thank you. Is that all?
You moved the recommendation?
Oh, sorry, my Lord Mayor. Can I move those changes, please, as in the appendix? Thank you.
Is that agreed?
Thank you.
Now going to motions. Can I, my members, in terms of the time of speeches and removal of motions that's five minutes and has the right to be qualified and is all the speakers three minutes and two minutes for extensions, if they leave by the council? Also, can I, my members, to please indicate clearly if they wish to speak on this? Well, there's a particular motion or amendment to enable me to make a note of this to speakers. So, bring the campaign, my mayors. Yes, I'm inviting them, because I'm still looking for them. Four, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, second. Yes, and can I inform you that Angela, Angela Coleman's has indicated she would just speak on this and that will be her first speech. Okay?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I shall be very grateful. I think it's important, I would ask, in particular, opposition councils, those of people that are here in the change, but just to make a note of some of the comments that I'm going to be making talk, just basically factual because we are seeing today, of course, the great debates of our flexes and what's going to happen and whether people desire or whether anything happens since I left. But this is a big debate that I will agree a deal or have a no flexes deal. It matters because it will be hugely influential in what we do moving forward as a city, not just this city but others, because I'm absolutely convinced that we will suffer serious in terms of if we end up with a year old day. And I may see the latest figures ahead of our December local government's settlement figure, you know, pay the budgets announcement 10 days ago, it seems a lot longer than that. And there's absolutely nothing yet for Liverpool, nothing at all. And no decisions have been made. You see £440 million being given to local government for long repairs, potter, which I've got £4.8 million for Liverpool and you know, we've got probably around about £400 million where repairs and pots are needed in the city. As a description of example of how the government is playing smoke and mirrors with the funding. Yesterday, there is an increase in public sector funding, but now about 68% of that comes on the national debt service and other things. So in terms of the local government needs very little, in terms of number uplift, the local government is told to deal with the issues and problems that we face. And of course, we'll make for the first week hopefully in December when we get our announcements in terms of how we will actually manage our adult social care moving forward and whether we get similar opportunity with pre-set and stuff going on before we move forward. Well, I got these figures from our director of finance today and it's just important, I think, that just people sometimes we forget about and it's just reflected on where we are. When we hear the Prime Minister saying things like austerity is over and that, you know, the country has made tough choices, but austerity is over. As you know, we set a three-year budget and leading up to 2020, we've already had an indication of what our local government grant funding will be. And we've set aside a three-year budget. We've got another round of 15 months to go, but we're about £37 million short of the savings that we've got to make between now and April 2020. But I just thought it was important just to give some figures in. 2010, we used to receive £523 million in funding and today it is £246 million in funding. That's a 64% reduction. So it's important that, and these aren't my figures, that our own financial department's figures. But just again to sort of and remind you that our social care, our social care budgets is somewhere around about 65% of what money we get in. We have to spend around about 65% of that money we get in for adult and children's social care. So you can see that the rest of the money that looks after the streets and the libraries, the children's centres and our street libraries and all of the things that we have to do is made up of the rest of that 35%, 65% is actually spent on social care. So it's just important when people get excited and think that austerity is over, because it is certainly not for us. So that's why there's a great emotion, which is backed by the LDA, but backed by core cities across the country, is saying that councils are seriously at breaking point. There is no flexible flexibility within that. And again, just to remind people that in 2010, we used to have around about £127 million in reserves. Today, that is round about £17 million reserves and we've been supporting adult social care and children's services for the last four or five years, using reserves, adult social care to the tune of around about £13 million a year. And previously, when we look at where we are and what we're up to and what we're having to deal with with regards to a city, and I'm sure my cabinet colleague, councillor Barry Kush, that will tell you about children's social care. Because we allocated around about £7 million to uplift children's social services, but the budget pressure on us for an additional £7 million. So a total of £14 million more being spent this year than what we did last year.